Call the meeting to order, this is, can you hear me? What was that echo?
Lobby for me.
Okay. This is the Beach Activities Ordinance Public Hearing. We will start and if you would silence your phones and we'll turn it over to Sydney so she can explain how we're, the process.
Thank you Commissioner Jones. First off, I would like to explain, I guess, how we got to this process. We've had numerous public workshops, both at the BCC level and the TDC level, and we're here tonight to talk about adopting the ordinance. And I would say, given the large amount of workshops that we've already had, the board may want to consider setting a time limit for public comment this evening. And I also wanted to state that we're going to deal with Section 22-61 which deals with beach vendors and Section F of the resolution that's before you, which also deals with the fee structure for beach vendors.
Okay, and I will, under the vendor section, I will be recusing myself from the vote, and I will let Commissioner Chapman take over until we get to the other section.
Yes. Doesn't have the page. Okay Commissioners, I guess just briefly to go through the changes that were discussed at the previous workshops on Section 22-60 which deals with beach vendors. In the draft of the ordinance, you can see that there are changes made to Section D3. All of these changes were things that were discussed at the previous workshops. I will note that there was an inadvertent, I inadvertently left out on paragraph D and E, the language "at regional and neighborhood beach accesses." That's something that came up at the workshops previously.
I'm sorry, what page did you say Sydney?
Seventeen of twenty-three.
Thank you.
In Section D3.
I can't read that.
And I would reiterate, this is a little bit of change of how we've handled beach vendors in the past, so we're making a distinction based on the comments at the public meetings between vendors on private property and vendors at regional and neighborhood beach accesses. Those are the changes to Section D3. Also, Section D3 makes it clear that there's a fifteen-foot buffer from the toe of the dune. This fifteen-foot buffer mirrors what's held in the customary use ordinance, it also mirrors changes that are in another section of this ordinance. If you go to pages eighteen and nineteen-
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you.
I'm sorry.
Do you have a copy that's legible? Mine, the, I cannot read the red at all.
Okay.
No.
Try this one Commissioner Commander, I feel a little bit easier.
You got an extra one?
Uh, we can get an extra one.
Yeah, can't read them.
Look at mine.
Okay.
I'll share with Commissioner Chapman.
Thank you.
Have you gone past seventeen yet? Do you have changes you want to make?
Thank you. Yes ma'am.
Would you like to speak now about the regional and neighborhood beach accesses? Or did you go like-
You can, if you'd like, I can go through all the changes in this section and then we can have comment, if that's okay?
Okay.
So if you'll see on pages eighteen and nineteen, there's a paragraph in eleven and twelve that are added, those are changes that are located in another section, that we're just making explicitly clear that that activity that's always been in the beach activities ordinance is prohibited. And then there's a newly added paragraph thirteen which prohibits vending of tents greater than six cubic feet. And that mirrors the language in the other section as to members of the public. And those are all of the changes to Section 22-60. And again, this is a draft, so if you guys have any recommendations on how to change that, I-
Commissioner Nipper, you have some comments?
I do. I've gotten a lot of emails regarding the regional and neighborhood beach accesses, and in order to make it us completely fair and equal to all the vendors, I think the one concern is the homeowners association or the other vendors that we have for specific homes, that we treat them all the same. In other words, maybe the word, I just thought of the verbiage "any vended beach" as opposed to saying "regional and neighborhood" are going to be treated differently than HOAs. Than home, than, than-
Right, and we could accomplish that simply by deleting "at regional and neighborhood beach accesses" everywhere it's mentioned. Again, whatever you guys prefer, this is something that came up at the workshops, we could go in either direction.
My thinking there was that if the HOAs are working successfully, why, why, I mean, why mess with it? Things that are working, we're having problems at neighborhood and regional accesses, so that's why I wanted to fix those. But if the AOA, the HOA is working, you know, working well, then why do we want to change that? I mean, that was my thinking.
My thinking?
Mm-hmm.
Safety. If we're, if the whole intent was to put six chairs, as I recall, and then have access for safety, then why would we treat an HOA differently than we would a regional? It's about safety and being able to get vehicles to the beach, get someone who's harmed off the beach.
And we'll see if there's any comments out there, I'm not sure if any of our HOA or our Alice Beach or Rosemary Beach-
Were we also trying to differentiate between public and the private by implementing-
Yes sir. Yeah, I think that this language came from a comment brought about by private property owners and HOAs. I guess their concern was that they had, number one, they had already ordered a lot of their equipment for this year and based it on a setup that wouldn't conform with these regulations. So there was that concern, and you know, again, we could always make this change next year if it turns out that the HOAs, we have an issue with them. But the, many of the HOA members and private property owners showed up and stated that they had already made a substantial investment for this year based on not having to conform to these regulations.
Brian, do you have an opinion?
Yes, they should be, and here's their objection.
Thank you Chairman, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. As an efficiency standpoint, if it was uniform down the beach, it would be easier to enforce and also easier to understand. I do understand the different arguments that were made during the workshops.
Right.
And if it's an access and safety issue, then uniformity would be, you know, the thing. But I think that county attorney ought to speak on customary use as well as the different ownership of the beach that exists in Walton County.
I understand the argument, they've already ordered their stuff for this year, but it's not exactly like they're gonna go bad, you know, it's not like apples, you know. So I mean, if you ordered fifty beach shares and can only use thirty, well, it'd be twenty ahead for next, I mean, you know, I don't, I understand the argument, but I don't exactly accept it because this, these things aren't perishable.
Right.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
I remember David Bailey, is he, David, are you here today? I remember he specifically spoke at the meeting about this would, you know, this would take a row, a whole row, and he gave the dollar amount of how much it would cost Rosemary, for example. My thinking's this, if it's working at the HOAs and it's working at these places and we're not having issues, then why would we want to, you know, do anything about it now? The safe, and that leads me to, we said six feet wide every sixth chair. I remember, I thought I remembered saying that we were just gonna half the chairs and put one aisle down the middle, and maybe, do y'all remember us talking about that?
Yes.
Okay. And we can make that change easily.
That's my understanding of how we left.
Okay.
One, one access from the back tiers to the water halfway through. Make that change.
Yes sir, I can.
Is that all there is said on this part dealing with the vendors that we were discussing?
Yes, sir.
Is there any public comments concerning what we have just laid out and what we talked about previous?
Have we solved the, including HOA or not? Have we solved, have we decided on that yet?
Has there, okay, I saw it as uniformity and a safety issue. Has there been code violations or calls about issues on, on homeowners association's beaches? I guess that would be, because I saw it as a uniformity and a way of enforcing the code, and I do, I respect a difference of opinion. Brian?
Yes ma'am. Typically, the HOAs that have their own vendors, they do a good job of managing their chair setups. We don't have many complaints about access to the water, stuff like that. But a part of that is, is because they also do a good job of keeping the general public off their beach. So, but I do believe that the fifteen, a distance from the water's edge needs to be considered, simply for the east-west traversing of the general public down the beach. If you go back to property ownership, they own down to the main high water line in most cases, and that is typically, when I say typically, it's a general rule of twenty to thirty feet from the water's edge. And so if you went back to the actual literal sense of the permit, it says that they're only allowed to vend on their property. So in essence, it could be already argued that they're not allowed to be down by the water's edge anyway.
Right, well-
I think that should be uniform, I think the fifteen feet-
Fifteen feet should be uniform.
Should be uniform.
Okay.
Now, the chairs?
Chairs on that beach, like I say, they have a equipment list that they give us, and most of the vendors give us a, what I call a fairly detailed site plan. It doesn't always show the exact location of the chairs, but that ought to be for them to manage how many access aisles they want to have. I would assume that their renting public, or their renter or rentee would say, hey, gotta have access to the water.
But, no, I think the fifteen, by the water and by the dune should be standard all the way across.
Yes ma'am.
For any vended beach, I'd say.
Yes, for any, for any vended beach.
I agree, I agree. I see, any other comments that I have written down? I think Sydney and I have, I think we've discussed all those, and the parking plan and the application, is that, is that under fifty-nine or is that sixty?
That's under fifty-nine.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Any other comments from the board? You had your hand in the back, come on. Be sure, if you're gonna speak, come up here, identify yourselves, spell your last name for the clerk, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much, it's Philip Poundstone, P-O-U-N-D-S-T-O-N-E, representative of the newly formed South Walton Beach Services Association. A few things to unpack here. First about what Commissioner Nipper was saying, is the public versus the private beach. We as the association believe that what happens on those two beaches should be different. We think that on a actual contracted beach, that they've run that for a certain way for years, places like Alice, Seaside, Rosemary, that they really, I don't have anything to do with those communities, but I think they would be harmed greatly to take away hundreds of sets off fifteen feet a row back. Also, we need to unpack too, and it's in another section, we can get there later, this same rule that applies to fifteen feet from the water's edges for the general public also, according, you could correct me if I was wrong? And I could not imagine Mr. Jeff or any of his crew going up to a family, telling them they're getting a ticket because their chair's touching the water. And that, again, that has nothing to do with me and a beach vendor, we're just trying to do what's best for the community. I printed out something from the actual property appraiser's website, if I can hand out, that just shows the rules as they are now, where we as vendors can set up on public beaches, and then what happens with these new rules with the access aisle, as well as fifteen feet as opposed to reasonable distance, if I can hand that out?
Hand it to the clerk.
The, the front page is how it is now, the back will be what it will be, and you'll see the dark striped areas, the room that'll be taken away. And my number one concern with all of these rules that we're discussing today is the space that we're taking away from people who wish to rent and have beach services. That's our tourists that spend millions of dollars, that is our locals, that is at Grayton Beach, that is everywhere, that what's gonna happen is when we take this away from those people, I know we're trying to make rules to make things better, and I think that's a great thing, and I think that can work a lot, but I think that we are just going to have a flood of complaints from the people that we don't want to be complaining because a lot of things are gonna happen. Another thing is, this is all being taken away from the vending or beach services side, yet everything remains the same on the other side, which is fine, I want the, the general public who doesn't want chairs to have as much room as they can, I think that's great. But I think everyone's forgetting that this is not about a beach vendor or somebody who wants to set up beach chairs. We don't create this demand, it is, it is the TDC's market, and this person is not gonna be able to have a beach chair that they want, that they come on vacation and spend money to have, and I'm afraid that that's gonna deter people from coming back to this area, which provides a lot of us jobs in this area. So, I'd appreciate your consideration with that, and thank you for your time.
Philip, I'm not sure, what, what specific change are we making that's gonna cause this hardship?
There's a few. I believe in, on behalf of the association, we think a reasonable distance from the water's edge is fair as opposed to fifteen feet, fifteen, we know the beach better than everyone else. And to be completely frank with this, this, this document right here, that I've tried to preach this whole time for the past year, this document was created several years ago with a previous commissioner and a previous TDC chairman, okay? It is steamrolled and continued to go on when I sincerely don't believe that any of these are real issues or that these solutions are gonna fix the issues, and this is a piece of paper that's been around for three or four years. I don't think it's the solution. We as vendors know the beach better than anyone else, and like, for example, the fifteen feet from the water's edge, okay? We don't ever get complaints that a vendor makes it where you can't have an access aisle to walk down the beach, because we don't want our equipment in the water, we don't want it washing out to sea. So somehow, this has got changed to public beaches, which is okay, and now it's getting changed onto HOA beaches, which, again, I don't have a dog in that fight, but I'm just standing up for them, that it's gonna greatly impact, not me, not Rosemary Beach's beach service, it's gonna impact the end user, who is the tourist, that pays my mortgage, pays for me to be here, and pays for my family, and a lot of our families, and that's what it's really about. It's not about us, it's about the tourist, and they're gonna be the ones that are harmed, in my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you sir.
Thank you.
All right, I think the lady, second row on the right-hand side was next, and I believe, yes, third, fourth.
Good afternoon, Georgine Newell, N-E-W-E-L-L. First of all, regarding item thirteen of this section that we're talking about, when I reviewed the video, it did say that these tents had to be behind the chairs. So if I heard that wrong, okay, but I don't see any mention where these tents for vendors have to be behind the chairs. So, just wanna point that out, if you guys wanna discuss it, great.
We, we did have discussion about that. My recollection is that the board, there wasn't a consensus about that, but if you guys wanna make that change, we can make that change.
We talked about it, but I don't know what happened on the second one.
Yeah, I know we talked about it. I assumed that the tents would be behind the chairs so that the tents wouldn't block the view from the chairs, and that the whole point of making the smaller tents and, you know, the tents would be on the vendors, you know.
We can certainly make that change if you guys would like to.
You know, but that's what everybody else wants.
Okay, let's think about this, so, 'cause there, on the other side where the public goes, somebody might need a six-by-six tent for their complexion or-
Yeah.
So, so it could be both sides. I'll say that.
You talking about on the public side or the vendor side?
Well, I think, I think if we're gonna do the six-by-six, we would need to do it blanket, because somebody could be going to the public side and need a-
Well, I thought that's where we were. We went the six-by-six for anybody, but I guess the question now is, on the vendor side, do we set them up behind the chairs and umbrellas, or, I don't know if we want to regulate it on the public side, and they can set it up where they want.
Well, if they're setting up chairs in rows, and they have to be fifteen feet from the water's edge, it's only logical that the tents are gonna have to go behind the chairs. I mean, what are you gonna do, put a tent in the middle of all those chairs? You know? That would mess up your road.
Commissioner Anderson, you have some?
Well, you know, we get into this public vendor side thing, I think that's gonna cause a nightmare for Brian. So what, whatever we decide, I think it needs to be uniform.
Brian, your opinion?
I think the discussion we had was that six-by-six tents, and then there was a minor discussion about where they should go, and then I believe it was left with, you know, wherever they can fit in, because the simple fact is, is that on a lot of the public beaches, the umbrellas go from water's edge or whatever the distance is from water's edge to the toe of the dune. And if you said that all the tents had to be behind that, it would just be, I don't think it'd be easy to regulate, understand, regulate, or enforce. And so I would just leave it as six-by-six tents, and wherever they can fit in is where they can be placed on the beach. That would be for vendor and general public.
I'm fine.
Go ahead.
All right. The other thing about the language, fifteen feet versus a reasonable distance from the water's edge. The reason why we don't have a harmonious beach, the reason why we have a rush to the water, is because there's a fierce competition to get at that water's edge. Now, if you try to walk the beach, literally, east to west, west to east, you are in at least a foot of water. That's the only way, because the chairs are right at the edge. The language was ambiguous. What reasonableness is to one is not reasonable to another. There needed to be a definitive number in there, okay? And I know that this impacts their business, there's no doubt about it. When Rosemary loses a row of chairs, and that's five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue in a season, totally understand that, but that's a resort community. If they wanna deal with the complaints, let them, you know? But they're, they're to satisfy their homeowners, all right? These are, these are public beaches. We need to allow people to walk the beach. So some definitive measure had to be set in there, and, and I really feel that we should try. If it, if it doesn't work, let's meet and say, okay, let's suspend it. But unless we try, we'll never know, and we can't kick this can down the road. We need a harmonious beach. And one more thing, the public is not gonna understand initially, but if our TDC comes forth with a proactive campaign through your partners and saying, these are kind of the new rules to have a better beach experience, then I think we can overcome an awful lot of things. And just like the parking in Rosemary all went to one side, Mr., you know, Bagby said, people will get used to it, and when they see a better beach experience, they're gonna appreciate it. Please, this is our greatest asset, we have to, have to protect it, we really do. Thank you very much.
All right. Let's see, I gave numbers out a minute ago, where we at? Number three? Three? That you? Come on. Number four is over here in the yellow jacket? Number five? Keep in mind, you're number five. You wanna be number six? You're six. Okay, now we're not gonna go into a long public comment section here, so make it quick, please.
Kelly Anderson, I have a couple of pictures, I apologize, I looked it up on my computer so if you could pass them over. First of all, I don't have a dog in this fight, I'm not affiliated with a beach chair vendor, I am not affiliated with an HOA, but the three photographs that are circulating right now, I apologize to those of you who can't see them, all of those are on private property, they are not at the beach accesses. And I honestly don't know, if you create a fifteen-foot buffer at the public accesses and don't carry it down the beach, it's not gonna solve any of these problems. First of all, I see HOAs using the vendor chairs to circumvent the ordinance against signs and ropes, and the second thing I see is chairs where they're lined up, where the arms are touching the arms, and you can't get to the beach, you couldn't help anybody that was in the water. And then the last photograph is of a giant hole on the beach, and I'd like to make a suggestion that you include in the ordinance a prohibition on leaving giant holes on the beach overnight.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Number four, gentleman on my right, yellow jacket.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, my name is David Bailey, and I'm here representing Rosemary Beach. I apologize I was late, there was an accident on ninety-eight to-
David, if you will, spell your last name for the clerk.
B-A-I-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
I appreciate what I think is an effort to limit the regulation, I think in the comments I missed a little while ago, to limit these new regulations to areas where the problems impact the public, and to perhaps let the resort-type communities, as they have for, in some cases, twenty or thirty years, continue to regulate themselves to some pretty great success. The proposed regulation regarding food and beverage vending is just one example that still remains in the ordinance, appears to apply to all beaches. It will render, by my count, some pretty significant longstanding businesses in Seaside, Seescape, High Point, and a more recent food service on the beach from the Pearl Hotel and Rosemary Beach, those will be rendered illegal overnight. I've spoken with one beach vendor who provides service to Seescape, he's very troubled by that, and he's now in communication with the management of Seescape about it. The bigger issue, in respect of everybody's time, is the late date at which some of these pretty significant changes have been put into a red-line ordinance form. I can appreciate staff memos, TDC staff memos have been circulating for some period of time, but they've been a moving target, and until things are put into a red-line form in ordinances, it's difficult for folks in my position to react to them. All of this has happened by my calendar since November of last year, we are less than a month before the season, and my mention of the revenue impacts of a loss of a row in Rosemary Beach was not intended to impress anybody with the money involved in beach vending, it was to impress you how many jobs will be impacted, potentially how many visitors who we will turn away because we don't have chairs for them, and, and the overall potential impact to our local economy. So I appeal to you again to consider extending the period of time you receive input and collect data regarding these changes.
Thank you. Number five, I believe it is, yes ma'am?
Really quick, my comments apply to-
Need your name and spell your last name for the-
But you might not want me to talk yet, so, but my name is Brooke Sobota, S-V-O-B-O-D-A. My comments apply to tents on public beaches, and I know you guys have been kind of going back and forth between vendor and public, so I didn't know if you wanted me to speak now or if you wanted me to wait until you got to that point.
I think Brooke's comments have to do with Section 22-54, which we're not quite there yet.
We're not there yet.
Right, okay, but I just need your jump back between public and vendor, so, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, please, thank you. I think, yes. White shirt, you're after this one. We got about six more minutes.
My name is Lisa Steenow, S-T-E-E-N-O. My comments are brief, they concern Grayton Beach specifically. It is a public beach, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and there's multiple permitting, boats, the hundred and fifty users in the lottery, the grandfathered people. Since the umbrella business has burgeoning, it's so crowded, and people are at each other's throats. My concern is how many umbrellas are going to be allowed.
Brian, can you speak to that?
Chairman, we have two vendor zones on Grayton Beach, one adjacent to the Western Lake Outfall, and one about in the middle of the two drive-on accesses, and the number of chairs and umbrellas that are limited to that area, or what will fit in there comfortably and can be rented successfully.
Who determines what is comfortable?
Well, if the board adopts regulations with an access aisle and a distance from the toe of the dune and the water's edge, that would further limit the area, the vendor areas.
I feared a, I, people will hit a child. I mean, have you been down there in the summer? If there's three rows of umbrellas, all these cars, I mean, it's crowded, please, that's my question, please, please consider a volume amount. Please, please consider a volume amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance, anybody? Oh, yeah, yes, sir. About forgot about you.
Good afternoon. Mark Hodgson, H-O-D-G-D-O-N, I'm General Manager of Sandeston Dolphin Beach Resort. I would urge this honorable board to clearly separate public beaches from the needs of private beaches. As you know, Sandeston and Sierra Seaside represent $2 million in taxpayer revenue on an annual basis to this county. Sandeston enjoys over 80,000 group room nights a year. Forty-five thousand of those group room nights have enjoyed wonderful, safe, and organized experiences on our private beach at Sandeston. So uniformity, saying that this applies to all public and private, is an opportunity for us to remain competitive in our group market share. Okay? Very important to understand the impact economically. There are some groups that have enjoyed, obviously, tents much greater, much larger than six by six. So again, I would urge you to review this very carefully and very closely. You know, public beach needs require one set of standards, private beaches require another set of standards, and more latitude for them to be economically successful as businesses and viable. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Does the food, does the food get in the, do y'all do food at Sandeston?
Yes, we do. We do a significant amount of food and beverage, not only with our group business, but with our weddings business.
Right. So with that said, I really, I would like to see the food and beverage limited to the regional and neighborhood accesses, if we're having issues there, and leave the HOAs and the Sandestons separate. I mean, if we're not having problems there, I've not heard any complaints about these. Why, why do we wanna go ahead, why do we wanna mess with anything we're not having problems with? Is my, you know, let's deal with the regional and neighborhood. If we start having problems, then we can come back next year and deal with the Sandestons and the Alice Beaches and the Rosemary Beaches as well.
I can assure you, honorable board, the Hilton Sandeston, Sandeston Dolphin Beach Resort like businesses are as concerned about safety as you are, and doing things right, and running responsible businesses. And certainly, any safety issue that would occur is a public relations issue and opportunity for me. So rest assured, it's a first priority.
All right. Thank you, sir. I got a quick thing.
Madam Chairperson.
Are we striking number 12? Is that the consensus of the board, dealing with food and beverage?
Commissioner Chapman, we can certainly do that if you guys want to, but that language came from, if you'll flip to page 16, the very last sentence of paragraph A reads, "Food and beverage vending operations are not permitted on the sandy beaches." So as I read that, and as code enforcement has read that, vending of food and beverage is not allowed on any beach in Walton County currently.
That's the way it is. Brian?
The original intent of that verbiage in the code, I believe, was to prevent hawking of food and beverage on the beach. Mark's food and beverage, if I'm correct, is probably prepared off-site and delivered in containerized packages to the beach.
That's correct.
Via a styrofoam container, a cup, or whatever. So I think, you know, we don't look at that as vending food and beverage on the beach.
That's, this would be like somebody taking a grill out there and cooking it up for hot dogs for everybody that's out there.
Correct, or, you know, hot dog cart, ice cream boat.
Right.
Stuff like that. That was what I believe the original intent of no vending of food and beverage on the beach. We also, we also use it to limit special event planners from cooking on the beach, and stuff like that.
Well, shouldn't we maybe expand the definition of what this means, to include...
So we could handle it two different ways. We can delete paragraph 12, if you guys would like, or we can add the language, the qualifying language, "at regional and neighborhood beach accesses."
What's board's wishes? In regional and neighborhood?
I think that's important, and I also think that we should list, because you know how folks are, let's list Rosemary, Sandeston, Alice Beach, let's list the ones that are, that do this, as I say, they cook the food and bring it there. But we've also gotta be careful. You know, grandma and grandpa and the two kids come down to the beach, and they bring their grill. That also shouldn't, I mean, you know, unfortunately, the days are gone, and I have been one that's, that's, you know, back when dinosaurs were on the earth, I actually spent the night on the beach before and cooked hot dogs and things. But we're past that, you know? I mean, it's a safety issue to me. So I'm, I'm fine with, say, with Sandeston and them, because they cook it and bring it on the beach, and so does the caterer. You know, they don't cook down there. But I think that's the, you don't cook down on the beach. It's my criteria, and then let's, let's set them apart. Let's set the resorts apart from neighborhood, but I think they should be listed.
Well, do you think it's necessary to list all of them individually, if you just restrict it to neighborhood and regional accesses?
Do you think that would cover it?
Yes, ma'am. I think that would be the better way to go about it.
Okay.
So we could just add the language, "at regional and neighborhood beach accesses. It shall be unlawful to vend food or beverage on the beach."
Yes.
Thank you for consideration. Appreciate it.
Brian?
Can I ask you, sir, before you go away? This 15-feet business, I'm assuming that people that stay in Sandeston, and I know people at Rosemary, they're kinda health nuts, especially at Rosemary, and they walk that beach. Well, if you have chairs all the way down to the water's edge, even your people can't walk the beach. So shouldn't there be some distance where you're not...
We're supportive of the 15-foot setback.
Oh, I love you.
Okay, the general public doesn't adhere to it, but we do as a vendor on our beach.
All right.
All right?
Thank you, sir. One more time, who's, thought I'd see a hand?
Chairman.
Come on then.
Yes. You have a comment?
Yes. Brian, what is the rule for the public cooking on the beach now?
They're somewhat limited by the bonfire section, South Walton Fire District. The verbiage that pertains to open flame, it doesn't necessarily say bonfire. So with South Walton Fire District, is there any comment here?
Dave is not on it.
Dave, can you address that? In the, I, I can address it. So anyway, they would not like to see the grills down there, and the reason is, because the grills then become bonfire vessels after the hot dogs are cooked. And so it becomes an unpermitted bonfire. So we've worked with them on, on how to regulate, enforce grills on the beach. To be quite honest with you, you don't see a whole lot of them, and the ones that you do see are now gas grills, small gas grills. Occasionally, on the big holidays, people down at Grayton Beach where they have drive-on access, will, will carry a bigger grill down there, and it becomes exactly what South Walton Fire District doesn't like to see.
And especially with charcoal. You know, have you ever, when they get through and they wanna go home, they dump that charcoal in the sand? Have you ever stepped on charcoal?
Right. That's the reason why they consider a grill, a charcoal grill, an open flame, and therefore subject to bonfire permitting.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Andrew?
Yes, Andy McAlexander, M-C-A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R, and that was exactly what I was coming up here, is not the vendors' issue of small grills or small fires on the beach with hot dogs and hamburgers with the family at Christmas at Grayton Beach, or other major regional accesses. And I would just hope that that would be addressed separately, possibly from the vendor issue of grills on the beach. And if it's an open flame permit that required by the fire department, I don't think any family in South Walton, or Walton County for that matter, would have a problem attaining that on the dates that they wanna go down there and have a family event. But it might, should be mutually exclusive to the vendor concept of these regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
David? Did you come up? Good afternoon.
Hang on a minute.
David Vaughn.
How are you?
D as in Vicker, A-U-G-H-A-N, South Walton Fire District.
Like Andy, I'm a little concerned about the public never being allowed to cook on the beach. Me personally, I like my birthday party down there every year. Do we have a situation where if I'm having a party, I can have a gas grill down there? Can I get a permit to do that? A small gas grill?
By my understanding, that is not allowed right now. Sammy would be able to speak to that specifically, but as I understand it, that wouldn't.
Okay. I, I have a problem with, I mean, you know, a lot of locals go down there and cook on the beach, and, and a lot of tourists do too, and I hate to take that away. I know it needs to be regulated, but I hate to see it taken away completely from the
Commissioner Anderson, I guess to address your concern, we don't have any changes proposed to the public preparing food on the beach.
Okay.
So we should have a status quo, as far as public on the beach. We're really only addressing the vendors.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd love it maybe if Brian, y'all monitored that this year, and, and, you know, and helped the public realize, when you're using charcoal or whatever, take it with you.
I don't have a problem making a gas. I mean, I, I, believe me, Commissioner, I agree with you 100 percent. There's, Brian and I have had this conversation about burying bonfires on the beach, and he knows how adamant I am about that. So I don't have a problem with that at all, just, and I agree, most of them do, just dump it on the beach.
Commissioner, I can offer that, we just had a meeting with Mr. Kellenberger about some of these outstanding issues, and it's something that we have discussed, that we will be, moving forward, that was an issue that was mentioned, and we'll be working with Brian to help clarify that, so that we can, you know, come to some solution.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Commissioner, and it's good, I ask you a question, Andy, this is just a question, okay? Should we also look at the size? I mean, some people bring those things that are six feet long. Should we, should we say that it should be a certain size?
Well, I think, I think this is something Brian needs to comment on.
And bring us back.
Our general practice is, is if we encounter somebody with a grill, if it's a small grill and they're cooking hot dogs and hamburgers on it, we talk to them about the open flame. Here's what the ordinance actually reads.
What page are you on?
Twenty-two, I'm on page seven of 23. It's 22-54B, paragraph one, "It shall be unlawful for any person to ignite, or maintain, or participate in the maintenance of a bonfire, campfire, or other activity that results in an open flame on the beach of the Gulf of Mexico without a permit as provided herein." So officer discretion comes into play on this. If we encounter a family responsibly cooking some hot dogs on a grill, I'd say typically we encounter this on the major holidays. It's not an every weekend occurrence. We inform them of what the rules are, and what we expect their behavior to be in regards to the charcoal in the grill. If we encounter somebody later in the evening that now has six or seven logs in the grill, they typically receive some sort of paperwork for having a bonfire without a permit, unless they have a permit. So it actually is regulated to a certain extent. Once again, officer discretion plays a large part in this. So we feel like we have that actually under control.
And the first time's a warning?
Yes, ma'am. If we encounter a person the first time, it is by Florida Statute 162, we have to give them notice to care, and so that is a warning.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions from the board?
Sydney, remind me what we just decided on?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's fix some ass for that.
Okay.
Lots of discussion about grills.
So the main areas of discussion are located in, on page 17, under paragraph D3. So there was a suggestion on D3A to remove the language "at regional and neighborhood beach accesses." There was that discussion, but there, we don't have it cleared. So if anybody would like that language removed, I would suggest you make that part of your motion. You may also wanna consider, there was some discussion about removing it in paragraph E as well. You may or may not want to do that, but you would want to make that part of your motion. Also, on paragraph E, there is a suggestion that instead of provide for six-foot-wide access aisles, every six chair and umbrella setup, that that language be replaced with continuous aisle, a continuous, I'm sorry, one continuous access aisle through the middle to allow for access to the water.
Yes, I think that's what...
Yeah, but I haven't heard any of us say that we, we don't want the 15 feet. I mean, I, I thought we wanted the 15 feet from the water's edge.
That's my understanding.
That's my, yes, my, you said we moved it.
Across the board? No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Only remove the language "at regional and neighborhood beach accesses," and leave everything else in paragraph A, if you want the 15-foot from the water's edge to apply all 26 miles. So the paragraph would then read, "Add a minimum of 15 feet from the water's edge," and there'd be no qualification on public property only. Does that make sense?
Right, and that, that's just safety for a vehicle going back and forth, and if the HOAs are doing well, and that we don't have complaints, that, that's not what I was getting. I'm just talking safety of literally being able to move back and forth on the beach.
Right. All right, so I guess my question is, if I'm confused, are we gonna, are we gonna leave it at 15 feet at regional and beach accesses, and leave HOAs to monitor themselves?
That's the discussion that you guys...
I think 15 feet universal, myself. Not universal, up and down.
I, I think that, you know, we have very few problems in the HOAs. I, I would be willing to monitor them for this year, to see, and encourage them to set them back 15 feet. But, you know, if, if, I'm kinda like Commissioner Jones, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Brian, do you feel like you need that 15-foot buffer to move back and forth for safety vehicles, or am I over, am I overthinking this?
So the 15 feet from the toe of the dune is universal, all 26 miles. What we're talking about is 15 feet from the water's edge.
15 feet from the water's edge.
Right.
15 feet.
It can be argued both ways. There is, you know, like I said, the HOAs tend to regulate themselves better than vendors on public beach. However, you know, not only is it for safety and access by emergency vehicles or emergency personnel, it's also for just the general public that has the right to traverse east and west.
Yeah.
But I think that the compromise of not holding them to what their permit says, which means they have the right to vend on their property, in some cases, that's much further than 15 feet from the water's edge.
Not necessarily.
See what I'm saying? If you have a specific place with a permit, that's...
Let's see if we can bring this thing in for a landing. I think the consensus, correct me if I'm wrong, is that this 15-foot at the water's edge would apply to regional and neighborhood beach accesses only, but the 15 feet from the toe to the, toe of the dune is from one end of the county to the other side of the county. Is that, y'all understand?
I will reluctantly go along with that. I tend to agree with Commissioner Nipper, but I would also ask the, these HOAs to consider their clientele as where as the general public, people like to walk on the beach, that's how they get their exercise. And if you're gonna force me into two feet of water to walk, you know, so I'll reluctantly go along with you now, but I'd sure like to see it monitored. And I'd like some compliance, just because you know it's the right thing to do.
So I guess, given that direction from the board, if you guys would like, I can try to craft a motion for someone?
Craft.
Okay. So it would be to approve the changes in Section 22-60 with the following modifications. Paragraph D3E would be changed to read, "At regional and neighborhood beach accesses, provide one continuous access aisle through the middle for access to the water." And then, paragraph 12 on page 19 would read, "At regional and neighborhood beach accesses, it shall be unlawful to vend food or beverage on the beach."
That's, can I get a motion?
What's our move?
Second. Anybody in a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Grudgingly aye. Just can't get that...
Hang on a minute, I didn't get the vote.
And, Kim, so the record's clear, Commissioner Jones abstained from voting on this matter.
So what is the...
It was four. Four.
Four for it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Little piece of rum.
All right, with that said, I'm turning the...
No, 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 one more matter. Okay, so if you'll go to the resolution setting fees and fines pursuant to the ordinance, we'll need a motion to approve Section F of the fee and fine resolution, which deals with... fee and fine resolution, which deals with vendors. That's a change of, from five hundred dollars to seven hundred and fifty dollars, and you guys might have a cop, I'm gonna pass this down so you'll have it.
I've got two, if you might use one.
So, I would just need a motion to approve section F of the fee and fine resolution, increasing from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Did we talk about section fifty-four and fifty-nine?
We're, we're about to.
Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, it's okay. Sorry, I just wanted to get the vendors out of the way first.
Get the vendors out of there.
Okay.
And what pages are we on now?
We done from my.
Yes, you can pass.
Turn the chair back over to Ms. Jones.
So now, if you will turn to section, uh, I'm, I'm gonna go through the rest of the changes cumulatively so we can handle those all together.
Can you tell me what page you're on?
Yes, ma'am, I will. First, uh, there's changes, minor changes to the definition section, which is pages one through three. I'm sorry, one through four. Just minor changes. We included a definition of beach equipment that was suggested by Commissioner Commander at one of the workshops. On page three, we changed the threshold of a special event from fifty to thirty, and we've just changed those definitions to reflect that. Um, if you turn to page ten, you'll see changes to section twenty-two dash fifty-four of the ordinance, and this deals with members of the public and how they use the beaches. In paragraph O, there's standards regarding use of generators on the beach. Um, and there was language that was added very recently regarding fuel, uh, storage, that fuel storage is prohibited at the beach or boardwalks, and that a fire extinguisher would need to be used if you use a generator on the beach, and those are suggestions from the South Walton Fire District. Um, paragraph P, uh, it prohibits steel-bladed shovels on the beach except for certain personnel. Paragraph Q prohibits, um, prohibits the use of a tent greater than six by six by six feet on any regional or neighborhood beach access. Paragraph R, uh, requires that all beach equipment be set up fifteen feet from the toe of the dune and fifteen feet from water's edge.
Okay, so that's gonna need to be changed, right, to regional and neighborhood accesses, right?
Uh, I'm sorry, it says on any regional or neighborhood beach access, fifteen feet from the toe of the dune and fifteen feet from the water's edge at any, if you look at paragraph R.
Gotcha, yeah, I see it. All right.
Okay. And as you'll know, the fifteen feet from the toe of the dune is universal under the customary use ordinance. Those are all of the changes to section twenty-two dash fifty-four, which deals with the public's use of the beach. The net, the next set of changes is in section twenty-two dash fifty-nine, which is special events. Um, in paragraph B, on page fifteen, we made it clear that if a vendor is participating in a special event, that they have to be listed on the permit, and that's to deal with vendors not being placed on the permit. So, if you have a wedding, it's not the bride that's held responsible, it's the vendor. On page sixteen, um, there were some minor changes suggested by Brian, lowering the threshold from fifty to thirty, um, adding some language on what's required for a permit. And I would like to add, and if we can make this part of a motion, under paragraph C three, add a paragraph I, including a parking plan. So, it's clear that when you have a special event, that you have to have a parking plan. Um, paragraph six, uh, is a prohibition of having any special events, states within fifty feet of an active turtle nest, but there was discussion of a hundred feet at the, um, workshop, so you guys may want to change that from fifty to a hundred. Currently, there's no prohibition at all, our distance setup requirements. Um, let's see. And those are all the changes to the special event section. The other changes are in section sixty-two, which is page twenty-two and twenty-three of the ordinance. This is just language to clean up that section of the ordinance. It, it didn't come from Brian, it came from my office. It's just to make it uniform and consistent with our other ordinances.
Hey, do we have any comments from the commission? Do you have comments?
Do you want that motion now?
You can take a motion now, but, or take a public comment, whichever you prefer.
Okay, we'll take a public comment, then I'll, remind me, uh.
Yes, ma'am.
I remember specifically, we did talk about the hundred feet, um, from the turtle nest, as opposed to fifty feet. But let's hear a public comment, and then we can come back to that. Yes, ma'am, come on up. State your name and spell your last name, please.
Valerie Lofton, L-O-F-T-O-N. Thank you for listening to me. Our beaches and waters are home to four of the world's seven species of sea turtles. The loggerheads, greens, kemp's redleaves, and leatherbacks hatch on these beaches and travel for over twenty years, navigating thousands of miles of waterways until they reach mating maturity, and then they come back here to lay their eggs. The turtles that hatched here come back here in twenty years, as long as they live through twenty years of navigating the oceans. They come up at nighttime, for, uh, three of the four species are nighttime nesters, and they come up on the beaches at night, lay their eggs, and go back to the water. They are affected by light. They're affected by streetlights, firelight, flashlights, um, string lights, and I don't know, I have pictures. Oh, do you want?
Supply.
I'm sorry, I've not done this before. So, I have pictures of lights on the beach from, uh, vendor things going on.
I would assume it's vendor and guest as well?
Well, I.
Flashlights are from everybody?
Flashlights are really hard to do with my, um, cellphone, so I don't have flashlights.
Okay, okay.
But these are, are things that, um, I just, and I'm sorry, I took these just last year. I have lots and lots of pictures. I just did not have time to get things together in two days for this meeting. Um, we've documented females traveling for eight or ten lots away from where they originally came out of the water to make their nest and trying to get back to the water, traveling down the beach, trying to figure out which lights is the light on the horizon. They're looking for the light on the horizon to get back to the water. The same thing with hatchlings. Seventy to a hundred and seventy hatchlings come out of every nest, and when they get distracted by other lights, vendor lights or flashlights, or streetlights, or house lights, they become disoriented, and a lot of them die on the beach because they become dehydrated and never make it to the water. These are endangered sea turtles. As stewards of our beaches, all of us, all of us locals, need to take care of our beaches. Take care of the place that the sea turtles need to come to lay their nests. If we don't have sea turtles in the world, then I'm telling you, the rest of the ocean will change because the butterfly effect happens. Sea turtles eat the seagrasses. The seagrasses are, um, kept short so that they can grow and expand. When the, when the seagrasses don't grow, uh, get cut, then they grow tall and get smaller, and all the fish and the crustaceans that we eat at the seafood restaurants are not going to be living anymore because the sea turtles aren't there to keep the grass cut and growing. Um, when we take care of our land and set the bar high with our expectations, we will be the best teachers for future generations of folks who live here. Yes, go to the beach and have fun. Yes, enjoy the events on the beach with your friends. Yes, leave the beach cleaner than you arrived.
Valerie, if you could finish up, please. Your three minutes is up.
And yes, remember, it's a beach, not an indoor structure, and needs no lights and fires to enjoy the beauty of what it already is. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. I thought we had an ordinance that you couldn't have lights on the beach during turtle season.
I believe that is the case. And then, Brian, no lone lights, and then you gotta have a permit.
The private land development code, uh, requires an FD. EP permit if you wanna have lights on the beach for a special event during turtle season.
Okay.
Currently not require, not being asked for, but that will be one of the items that is, will be asked for moving forward.
Brooke, I believe you were next. Come on up.
Cause I thought that was already a requirement. I even have the little red things that you put on your flashlight, you know, for my grandchildren.
Thank you, Brooke.
Are you ready?
Yes.
I'm Brooke Sobota. It's S-V-O-B-O-D-A. I'm here representing Zehance Community. Uh, Zehance has been around since nineteen eighty-two, and what our concern is, is the six-by-six-foot tents and canopies that are being asked, um, are being asked to put in at the public and neighborhood accesses, or regional neighborhood accesses. Um, we are, we've been talking to Sydney, we're a little, we're a little, Brian, too, a little confused on where we lie in the neighborhood accesses because there's neighborhood access to the side of us, which connects to our public beach, but we actually have private accesses onto our beach. And we have several, um, older people, since we've been around since the eighties, that, you know, they're in their seventies or their eighties, um, or myself, I'm like, complected that, uh, use the canopies. And six-by-six is not a size that currently exists for, uh, us to use. So, we would like to ask, um, I hate to come forward with problems, so we like to maybe offer a couple of solutions, that, uh, maybe you exclude upland property owners from that, or make some type of clause that says that if they're, uh, not utilizing the TDC neighborhood access boardwalk, um, or possibly look at changing the neighborhood accesses to the ten-by-ten canopies or something that is more, um, you know, willing to work with people. Um, cause the six-by-six is pretty much like an umbrella, you can't even really fit underneath that. And, um, I think that also possibly another suggestion would be to look at cutting out the neighborhood accesses, since I think the main part of that was to keep big tents off the beach. Um, but at the neighborhood accesses, we don't really have those issues. They're all set up by mainly owners or by the locals that are walking to the beach. They're not carrying huge, big vending. Um, or possibly, our last, uh, solution we'd like to offer is making that just to vendors and not to the public at neighborhood beach accesses. So, those are our concerns. I'd like to hear from you guys if y'all have anything. Um, we're just trying to protect our skin cancer and our, our older generation that have been here for thirty, forty years.
I don't mean to be just, but I just found a Myred of six-by-cent, six tents on Amazon.
Did you?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
I'm an Amazon lover, and I just.
I, I am too, I am too.
And, um, so, I, you know, my only thing is, I understand you're, you're light complected and all, but we've got to have something, it's gotta be uniform. We expect these people to, to uphold the code and, and, you know, and if we start, well, you can have a bigger tent and you can't. I mean, code enforcement's gonna go crazy, you know, I, you know.
Could we, could we maybe do it just to regional and take out the neighborhood?
The problem we have, Brooke, is we have such a small amount of space, and we have people, and I've seen this, they set their tents up, big tents, and then they move over to the right or to the left, and they put rows of chairs out. So, they're actually taking.
Huge portions.
Huge. I mean, if everybody would just be common sense and, you know, think of their neighbors and sharing and those kind of things, but it's not happening. We don't wanna make these rules, but we have to when people don't abide and, and be respectful of their neighbors. That's the bottom line.
What about possibly the exclusion for if you access the public beach by a private boardwalk? So, as we are, um, we're not a vending zone, so it wouldn't affect vendors, it wouldn't affect anything. It's literally just the beach in front of our home. So, it would just be if you access the beach by a private boardwalk first, first the TDC public boardwalk to the neighborhood accesses.
But I think that's what I'm saying. How do we, how does the code enforcement officer know?
Yeah, that's gonna be just like.
That's a nightmare.
How's code gonna differentiate between whether you come down that private access or you went to a neighborhood access somewhere else?
Yeah. I, 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 you know, I understand your problem, but I, you know, let's try it and see if it works, at least one year.
And, and Brian, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but do you see a solution to this? I mean, without making it so.
I think we oughta keep it like we've decided on at the previous meetings, uh, lend them to a six-by-six-by-six. We had lots of discussion about this, and you've already identified what the enforcement problem would be. How do we know where you came from, which access you came down, or whatever? There, there's no way to know. So, uh, we need to leave it like we have it.
Right. Now, part of Brooks' beach is private, and, I mean, and part of it's public, so I guess get on the private side, Brooke.
Zehance, uh, is an area where we have what I call the top of a fractional township. It's where the beach crescent goes down, and that last portion of beach didn't get sold from the government lots, and we ended up with it. And so, without looking at the actual plat, uh, it's.
And I. Like, goes to a triangle, so it's gonna be, it's already gonna be hard to monitor which part is the private and which part is the triangle that the public, or that the TDC owns.
We have, you know, GPS in our trucks and a app that shows where we are on the beach, and it's got all the GIS grids on it, so we can, uh, uh, tell where we are. But, um, like I say, it's, uh, I think we oughta be as uniform as possible, and that way our code enforcement can, you know, regulate easily, and the general public can understand easily.
So, there's no consideration to make that just for vendor zones or anything that y'all can do to kinda help our older community that have been around for a while? I know, I know it's, it's a difficult place to be in, but, well, I think we're one of the few places that even fall into this, so an exclusion is only gonna exclude a very small amount of people.
Okay. Um, we'll keep thinking while we're sitting up here. I, I, nothing comes to mind. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Never hurts to ask, right?
I know, I know. Okay, Sherry, come on. That's why I couldn't be a code enforcement officer. I would have so much mercy, I would turn my head on everybody.
Hi, uh, Sherry Peoples, P as in Paul, double E, B as in boy, L-E-S, Great Beach Catering. Uh, on the fifty-foot versus the hundred-foot, I'd like to request that you leave it at the fifty-foot, as we talked about in the last meeting. Uh, I feel that if we're gonna give a, uh, a layout of what we're doing and put all that in place, and we know when the, where the turtle nest is, we'll cer- certainly abide by that and, and plan our, our event around it. Uh, the lights that were shown, those are all glass lights. They're bright, they're not too turtle friendly. Again, once we change where vendors have to pull the permits, and you're required to, uh, provide, uh, code enforcement with your list of equipment, then that'll be detailed and outlined, and I think that would be fair. So, if y'all would think about that. Also, the next thing, we didn't talk about the fees. Have you gotten to that yet?
We haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay, all right. So, well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Matt Magera, M-A-T-T-M-A-G-E-R-A, with, uh, South Walton Turtle Watch. Um, I'm here to address the fifty-foot and hundred-foot, uh, with the special events. Um, as Ms. Sherry stated, she wants to keep it at fifty. Um, and she thinks that's fine, and I watched the last meeting, I heard a lot of people say they think this is fine, or this distance is fine. I've actually witnessed, uh, one of the pictures with the bright lights, the glass lights, I actually got called to that nest, that nest hatched. That wedding was not two hundred feet, it was about a hundred feet away. There was a bonfire that definitely wasn't two hundred feet away. That entire nest ended up in that wedding party in the dunes. The vendors had to pick up the turtles, take them to a bucket, throw them in the water. They're not trained. They had no idea what they were doing. We got called down to take care of that nest. Um, we had let plenty of people know that nest was about to hatch. A hundred feet honestly isn't even far enough. I have tracked hatchlings five, six, seven hundred yards down the beach. I've seen with my own eyes, um, you know, so I'm not sure where everyone's basing their distance, how they came up with this information, or their conclusion that a hundred feet is enough. Um, I, I've also watched the, uh, video of the last meeting, and they said, well, you know, if the nest is behind the event, you know, people walk up to the nest anyhow to see it, and that's true. But when this nest hatches, they go straight. They go to the water, hopefully. Most of the time, they follow the lights down the beach until they find, hopefully find the water. If not, we still find them the next morning dead from crabs and birds. So, honestly, one hundred feet's not enough. Fifty feet is entirely too close, and this is coming from someone that's done this for years. I've seen it with my own eyes. I know for a fact. Um, I also have no monetary motive for this. I don't make money, you know, whether the turtles make it or not. So, I'm sincerely just looking out for our environment, for an endangered species, which is really all of our duties on this beach first. We should be concerned about the sea turtles before concerned about beach chairs or distance from the wet sand. I think that should be our first, uh, thing we need to protect. Um, anyone have any questions for me, or wanna know anything about it?
How many months is, is the hatchling cycle?
Uh, well, like nesting season starts May and ends October one. A nest is, yes, and that's our busiest time, I get it. And a nest is about sixty days. There are variables, weather, temperature, it can go before sixty, it can go after sixty.
But now, um, Brian, with the special event permitting, will, we will be able to control the lighting so that they don't do this.
Yes, ma'am.
I spend my life diving on, on vacations. Um, okay, so that will be controlled as far as the lighting, as far, as far as.
We'll be able to minimize the, uh, and mitigate the large, uh, event we saw on the screen.
And, um, what are the other counties, uh, that have their turtles coming up? I think.
If you look at the east coast, almost no one on the east coast will allow a bonfire. They are far more strict than we are, and they have.
I, I'm sorry, a distance from the, from the nest?
Oh, what are the distance for, I'm not sure on the, uh, I know a lot of the east coast, they won't allow events like that at night. There's no lights on the beach at all. They won't allow any of it. They won't allow a bonfire on the beach during nesting season. We actually have some of the most relaxed rules when it comes to nesting sea turtles. Uh, the east coast, they're very hardcore on it. They take care of them. Uh, if a bonfire should be two hundred feet, there's no reason a special event shouldn't be two hundred feet. I mean, it's just as bright. Now, if you can regulate the lights, I guess, but it still leaves the situation of the nest hatching, then ending up in a crowd of. crowd of people, and we're doing this to appease a lady from Atlanta who wants to have her wedding on the beach, now we're putting an endangered species at risk, so she doesn't have to remove her wedding a few feet down. I just, I don't, I don't think it's right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian, thank you. Just, thank you.
Oh, that's it? Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Susan?
Thank you, Commissioners, Susan Palladini, P A L A D I N I. We do have a wildlife lighting ordinance, it does require that special events get a permit from DEP. It's not happening, and I hear that it's going to happen, but right now it's not happening. I spoke with both of the permitting folks with DEP, and I asked them how many permits they'd issued for Walton County. One of them told me, well, I think I issued one last year, and the other one said, well, I might have issued one or two. So, it's not happening, not only that, we have a habitat conservation plan, we're supposed to minimize the use of flashlights and other lights on the beach at night. And then, our HCP coordinator will ensure that special events are conducted in such a manner as not to impact nesting or hatching sea turtles. Our habitat plan coordinator is Melinda, and I spoke with her today, she had one good suggestion, she's like, why do we let these events go on until midnight? You know, we have a noise ordinance that lets events go on until ten, maybe we could decrease the length of time that people are allowed to have these events on public beaches, but I would absolutely encourage you to support more than fifty feet. And if we've got these public beach accesses where there's no room, and brides, brides don't make their plans two weeks out, they make their plans months out, so if you have a public beach that won't allow you to shift a hundred feet if you have a turtle nest, then can we take those public beaches off of the beaches available during turtle nesting time? Just a suggestion, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Yes, on the front row.
Thank you, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I am Tom King Jr., that is K I N G, and I live at Rosemary Beach. My wife built one of the first homes there, starting in nineteen ninety-six. We've been married almost fifteen years, I've been coming down here and have seen the fast development. I am a retired circuit judge, retired corporate attorney, retired brigadier general, have been a South Walton resident for a little over two years, and have turtle walked for two years. I've seen a great deal, not as much as the people who have spoken before me. I'll say this, we are the first ones out there every morning, before any vendors, we get up at four o'clock, some of us walk two or three times a week, and we look for evidence where a mother has laid her eggs, and it's a very sacred thing. If you haven't done that, we would be glad for any of you to join us. And then the vendors are allowed to bring their chairs out once clearance has occurred. And that's one reason we get up at four o'clock. Ninety-eight percent of the vendors do a great job, but there are certainly the violators, and that's where enforcement is so very important. A concern I have, and I live right on the beach, right next to the public access at inland, and I see the tiki torches at night, and they stay up, I don't know, I'm usually in bed before that ceases, but aside from being able to smell the smoke, those torches emit a very bright light, and two hundred feet is insufficient. A hundred may be okay, fifty is nonsensical. We have to be cognizant and aware of the fact that these sea turtles will go to the light, the smallest light, and it will break your heart if you get a call like Valerie called me one evening, and turtles were going everywhere, small turtles, going everywhere in the wrong direction, and many of them dried up. It will break your heart, and we all, and particularly you, have a responsibility to take care of these turtles, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Can I ask you one question, sir?
Yes.
Where are you from?
Excuse me?
Where are you from?
I'm from Birmingham.
Just love your accent there.
Well, I served in Vietnam and a few other places.
Love your accent.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we, do we want to do a motion on this, or we want to go on to the fees now?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I do have another question.
Sure.
The picture that we saw of the holes, have we, we talked about a shovel, that's in fifty-four, I guess we've talked about the turtles. Is there any viable way, Brian, to, by minimizing these shovels for only the certain, the sheriff's office, South Walton Fire District, and specific vendors, do you think that'll stop some of the holes that we're seeing, these huge, massive, that picture?
Yeah, hopefully it'll stop the hole issue on the beach. Another way is we have, you know, more beach ambassadors that we've employed-
Okay.
We also have a volunteer beach ambassador program that got started last year-
Yep.
And I believe that, you know, the holes, along with some other beach etiquette items, can be solved by that way. Most of the holes we found on the beach were done with what I call a large, you know, regular construction-grade steel blade shovel.
Okay, and so we're minimizing that with the verbiage? And then, sorry.
I was gonna say, you know, if we find a hole that evening, that person's already left the beach, we have no enforcement capability against it.
Do y'all carry stuff to fill in a hole?
We do, and sometimes we have to take our bobcat down on the beach to fill them in.
Wow.
So in essence, if they dig a hole, it's gonna take them a long time with a kitty shovel?
Yes, ma'am. I don't think we want to prohibit, you know, holes, because, you know, young kids like to dig holes on the beach. What we do want to prohibit is, you know, the person that gets down there and decides they want to dig the china.
Right. Yeah, I had guys dig a hole one time to stop a tandem truck from being on the beach, so you can imagine how big that hole was.
Yeah.
We needed the shovel, shovel thing then.
And one other thing, Sydney, I've had a couple of emails regarding generators, have we allowed generators in the past, or we're just clarifying it now as to-
Yes, ma'am.
Control it, so now it is enforceable?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, there is no rules or regulations about generators on the beach.
But we were allowing them before, and now it's just trying to put them in a-
Correct, now we'd like to limit them by size, power output, noise output, physical size.
Okay, right.
Anything else?
Yeah, and I would suggest, if you guys would like for me to try to craft a motion,
that you, I guess, vote to approve the changes as drafted with the addition of paragraph CI on page sixteen, just adding the words parking plan, and then under C six, if you would like to change that from fifty feet, you could.
I'd like to change it to a hundred myself.
I agree.
So we would just need a motion to that effect?
You'll make the motion.
Make the motion that we change, add parking plan, and add a hundred foot for an active nest, however the verbiage is for a hundred feet.
Yes, ma'am.
I will second the motion.
If the motion's second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
And then the last matter is the remainder of the fee and fine resolution. The only change is in section, additional change besides the beach vendors is section E, and this deals with beach special events.
I make the motion we approve the fee structure for beach special events.
Second.
Motion second, did we, we changed from thirty to fifty at some point, didn't we?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this is just a fee.
And then less than ten, was that still a hundred?
That was my understanding from the discussion, but the good thing about this resolution is it's not part of the ordinance, so if you guys notice a problem, or if TDC notices a problem with the fees or fines, we can change that easily and quickly.
Okay, we have a motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Oh, do we have somebody want to talk?
Are we on fees?
We are on fees, we just voted, so-
So what do we do? Go back?
You can choose to take comment if you'd like.
Come on, we'll have some comment, we just voted, but we'll have a comment.
I just want to, Sherri Peoples, on the fees, you know, the less than ten, when I went back and looked at our numbers and the events we did, and just kind of averaged everything out, for the events we did on the beach last year, you know, I looked at it at less than ten, if it could stay at fifty, that'd be awesome, ten to thirty, if it was at one fifty, these all average anywhere from five to fifteen dollars per person, you know, for guests. These numbers, thirty-one to fifty, two fifty, fifty-one to seventy-five, five hundred, and then, of course, seventy-six up, a thousand. Just a suggestion, but that would work within our numbers. We're gonna lose a lot of, with the way that it's changed now, many of our visitors from the thirty up to the fifty number, they're just not gonna be able to afford to do it. The numbers just won't work at all. So if you would take that in consideration-
And the typical event is a wedding?
No, we do, yes, we do do weddings, we did, we do several weddings, but a lot of our events are just shrimp boats and bonfires, that we do year after year after year, for the same visitors that come, same homeowners, everything. So, anything we do, if we feed two people because we're caterers, we have to get a special event permit. So, if I have two people, and I think we did, I said under ten, we did, what, eleven or twelve for last year, under ten people? But the biggest number, the biggest effect would be that thirty-one to that fifty number, and if that is at five hundred, if that could be at two fifty, and then go to five hundred and a thousand, I think that'd be fair, and it's a nice sliding scale, and it averages out from five dollars to fifteen dollars per person, and you can make that work, you know, that's in your mind, if you're doing something, that's kind of logical, and it's fair. I'm just asking, if you could think about that.
So it'd be fifty to-
Less than ten, keep it at your fifty dollars, I mean, it's ten people. Ten to thirty, one fifty, thirty-one to fifty, two fifty, fifty-one to seventy-five, five hundred, and seventy-six and up, a thousand.
Sherri, I respectfully disagree with you, I mean, as far as your, you know, these can be figured in in your catering, so that it doesn't, you know, show as that fee, but, you know, people are paying for the catering, where they could take their hot dogs and chips down themselves, so surely, I mean, to me, this is a cost of them wanting somebody to cater it, you know?
Absolutely, I understand, and it's different, a wedding, you know, at a wedding event, absolutely, it's different, because people expect to come and spend a lot of money, they're getting married, okay? But if you've got a family of five, or, you know, two families, and you've got twenty people out there, I mean, they're only paying, they're not even paying a thousand dollars for their food, then you're gonna throw another, you know, it's just, we repeatedly, we service these same people and have for the last fifteen to twenty years, year after year after year. So, I just appeal to you to please think about that sliding scale just a little bit more, if you would, and, you know, I'm fine with the fees, and I certainly think that it's no problem to raise them, I just think it needs to kind of be across the board, well fair.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up.
Hi, good afternoon, my name's Dan Keiser, K E Y S E R, I'm the executive director of sales at Sandeston, so we just saw these fees for the first time in the last day or two. We rarely have any events on our beaches that are less than fifty people, because of, obviously, the size of our property, the groups that are coming here, and they've been coming here for forty years. We have clients that will be astounded that we charge them a thousand dollars to have their events on our beach, especially those that have been coming for thirty and forty years, if you have the same meeting planner that's been coming for thirty years, I don't understand those numbers. Obviously, if we're talking about public access versus what we talked about earlier about Sandeston and other like resorts, then I'm not sure if we're being even included in this ratio, but this makes no sense for us whatsoever, because, like you said, all of our events are not ten people, they're mostly fifty plus. We're doing weddings, we're doing events in the evenings for groups after they've met all day, down at the beach. We've had events, you know, blanket event, special events permits done, we've gone through the processes before, this costing is nowhere near what we've done in our history at the resort, through our conference services department, and our director of conference services, who goes through, you know, all the proper channels to get the events, special events and blanket events done, for all the events that we usually do for a year, we've done it for a year at a time, not a thousand per occurrence, we're talking tens and twenties of thousands of dollars, that we're gonna try and then turn around and charge our guests.
Sydney, I didn't think, I thought this was just regional and neighborhood access.
Well, it's not necessarily, but if you look on page three of the definition section, under paragraph four, it states that special events do not include private parties on private property unless they are of such a nature to create a need for additional police life-saving or other services. So I guess unless Sandeston's trying to obtain a special event permit to obtain a waiver of some other code provision, it wouldn't necessarily have to get a event permit, am I wrong, Brian?
That's the way I read it.
I wanted to make sure, because it didn't say it-
If you're trying to get a waiver of a code provision as part of a special event permit, then I think it would apply.
Like, for example?
For example, I guess provisions having to do with lighting, or a waiver of some of the other code provisions.
If you want a bigger generator.
Right, a bigger generator.
And we typically don't even use generators at all on the beach, so, okay, I'm trying to make sure that, okay.
We just wanted clarification.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, right here.
I just didn't, I certainly didn't have a lot to-
Good evening, Erin Storey, S T O R Y, I'm with the Hilton Sandeston Beach, in light of the most recent question that we have, we've paid over twenty-five hundred dollars in fees every time since this, since the permits have come out, they've asked that Hilton Sandeston, through code ordinances, come and have us pay fifty dollars. So we have complied, and we have done the fifty dollar fee since September, I would just like to make that note. So if Hilton Sandeston falls within that community of private beaches, we need to know so we can start stopping the paperwork.
I mean, if you guys are seeking to have events so large that it would impact, you know, police life-saving, saving other services, or if you're seeking a waiver of a code provision, then you'd still have to get a permit.
Okay. I'd also ask that you consider the fact that for thirty-three years, Hilton Sandeston has been a part of this community and growing the local economy. We have commercial properties that surround us, we do not reflect or affect any of the residential or public beach accesses, we have the infrastructure with beach services, security, and our own parking, that our private events on the beach shouldn't affect anything that's going on within the community. Our second concern is the loss of the revenue that's going on through the communities, and I also ask that you would consider different fees for private beaches and resorts versus the public beaches. We have ninety percent of our two thousand seventeen wedding slots booked, for us to go back to the rest of these brides that haven't had their weddings yet, and ask them to tack on another nineteen hundred dollars to their package is something that we can't do, and it's gonna negatively impact our brides that we currently have booked.
Didn't we just say it didn't affect them?
But we've been getting fees, we've been, every time we have a wedding, we're asked for, to show our permit, even though we're a private beach.
I can't speak to that, but I mean, if you guys are having such large events, it may be required that you have a permit, or if you're seeking a waiver of some other code provision, I mean, a permit may be required. I mean, a permit may be required under certain circumstances.
It's just a special event permit that we've been asked to fill out.
Right. It, it would depend on a case-by-case basis.
In, in the past, we have been enforcing special event permits uniformly on the beach unless it is a private party on a private parcel. There's a couple of triggers that require a special event permit in the definitions. One of them is a commercial interest promoting or a commercial event or whatever.
Right.
And so, I believe that there probably needs to be some more research done and something defined as to resort community property like this. I think the reason why it hadn't been issued before is it was only fifty dollars.
Exactly.
Sandestin, is it Sandestin or Hilton? Sandestin, in the past, had done what was called a less than minor D O. D O that gave them blanket permission, so to speak, or annual permission for a specific list of special events. And they paid the fees on those special events. But I guess the bottom line is, is there is some conflict in the code, and it needs to be ironed out prior to moving forward. Because, you know, these two people are correct, their fee is fixing to jump substantially.
Yeah. I mean, we could easily, under paragraph E, make an exception for resort communities and set a different fee if you guys would like.
What about having a blanket fee at the beginning of, of each season? So, you pay so much, and then, say, a thousand dollars. And then, all they do is, because if you're having fifteen or twenty weddings, that thousand dollars is, you know?
We have about a hundred and fifty, so.
Well, there you go, you know, that's, well, math's not good, but that's about ten dollars a wedding. And then, just notify, I think it's important that, that we be notified. So, you know, that, hey, I'm having a wedding for five hundred people, you know, Saturday. It would be, you know, I think the county needs to know that, even though it's on your property. But maybe for the resorts at the beginning of the year, have a, a set fee. They pay it, and then that covers everything that, that you do. And I'd say a thousand dollars.
Okay. We could easily add that language into the resolution, a one-time fee per calendar year?
So, Brian, have the fees been fifty dollars across the board, no, no, it didn't depend on any? So, we're going really, in some cases, we're going up from fifty to a thousand, fifty to five hundred, fifty to?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we've already voted, I guess we could have amend if we want to change what we just voted on.
You can amend it.
I would make a motion to amend it to put the thousand dollars at the beginning of the season for resorts. But, you know, we had lengthy discussion about this at the last time. We have got to be able to, to take care of this, and as I say, for, you know, I've done a myriad of things in my life, and one of them was cater at one point. So, I mean, sometimes you just, you have to add this, as with any business, it has to absorb into your fees, you know, licenses and, and, you know, that, or whatever, you know, if your food bill goes up. So, I'm, I'm very comfortable, we voted, we did it for a, the right reason, I believe, but to add a blanket for the Sandestins and the Rosemarys and that sort of thing at the beginning of the season, I think is apropos.
Okay.
So, that's my motion, I guess.
If I, you said a hundred and fifty weddings?
We, yeah.
So, add fifty dollars, it's seven thousand five hundred dollars. And then, if we have someone else who does events over fifty people after seven times, it just doesn't seem to be, just doesn't seem to equal out, and.
The difference is, they're doing it on their property, you know, they're, and, and, and they're cleaning up, they're not, they're not using public beach, which belongs to the public.
And it, can we cleanly clarify resorts, because I, I, I agree.
I believe I can craft a, a definition for that, yes, ma'am?
I mean, you know, bottom line is, we're using public property.
Yeah, because that would be significant.
I still say we'll set up a hot dog stand at the courthouse soon. Because, you know, we're allowing people to make money off of, off of our citizens' property that they, you know, through their added loan tax and all pay taxes for, you know?
So, Commissioner Commander's motion was to add a provision where resorts are subject to a one-time fee of a thousand dollars per calendar year.
Yeah. Any other comments? Commissioner Anderson, did you have something else?
Yeah, just sitting here doing the math. I would like to see that we amend it to between thirty-one and fifty, that we do it to four hundred instead of five hundred. That would work out to around thirteen dollars.
Point of order, we have a motion on the floor, so, do we want to vote on that motion, or?
I was gonna add it to your mind.
Oh, okay, all right, then I will.
Wait a minute, give me the numbers, what were you talking about, putting it, thirty-one to fifty, it'd be what?
Thirty-one to fifty, I would recommend four hundred dollars.
It's two fifty now.
No.
It's five hundred.
No, I thought we changed it to two fifty.
Okay, well, then, I'm fine with that. You know, it's a tough call. I, I, I agree with, with both of you, really, I hate to say that, but.
There are two sides to every story.
Yeah, and I, uh. I, you know, I understand the, the resorts, they, they take all responsibility and all that. But I don't want, I also don't want to price the, the small people out of business either, so, you know, they're business owners in Walden County, too, so, I would second the motion of Commissioner Commander on that, and if we can go back to this, to the small vendor also.
Okay, so, restate your motion, it would be? Gee, what did I say? You said a thousand dollars for? A thousand dollars for resorts, a blanket at the beginning of the season, a thousand dollars to cover their events. Because there is, you know, code enforcement and all them, they need to be informed of these, so, a thousand dollars at the beginning of the year. Let's see how that works out. Because she's right, if they do that many, that's seven thousand five hundred dollars, I mean, they're getting a bargain at a thousand. Okay, and then leave the fee, he, he kind of made mention of changing your, adding to your fees. I know, I know, but we're gonna get this straight first. Yeah, we're gonna vote on this, and then? Okay, let's, let's, let's vote on the thousand dollars, and then we'll, we'll see if we want to amend the, the scale again. Okay, so, we have a motion that we charge resorts a thousand dollars. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay, now, I want to hear from you, and then we'll, we'll look at the scale again.
Sydney, what, what was the scale we voted on for the vendor?
It's my understanding that the scale was the one that I drafted. If that wasn't the case, then, Kim, correct me.
That was the vote, yeah.
So, it was a hundred dollars for less than ten people?
It's a minute.
Do what, do what, Sydney?
A hundred dollars for less than ten people, two hundred and fifty dollars for ten to thirty people, five hundred dollars from thirty-one to fifty people, one thousand dollars for over fifty people.
Right, that's what we voted on, passed. Okay, so, let's, we're gonna hear a few more comments, then we're gonna see if we're gonna stay with this or change it, and then we're going home. Yes, sir, come on. The weather's bad, on three thirty-one and ninety-eight, we have lots of trees down, so, just, I was gonna add to the end, while he's walking up here, though, be careful going home, yes, sir.
Hi, Dean Mitchell, Soawal Beach Buggies, we have Santa Rosa Beach Bonfires. I just wanted to comment on the, the prices for special event. I know a lot of people that come here have deep, deep pockets, but there are some people that come here that don't. And these prices, most of the events that I, I cater, these people would run from it. They just, they wouldn't, it wouldn't even be an option. And for me to roll this into my prices would, would be impossible. I mean, it's, it's, especially the fifty and over, I mean, that's, we, we probably would never do another one, fifty people and over, with my clientele.
Thank you. Yes, sir, right here.
Good evening, Davin Hand, last name spelled H-A-N-D. Also a small vendor on the beach, actually, a brand-new company, Thirty A Blaze, started this past summer. I was gonna add on to what the gentleman just said concerning those fees. If we had a person that wanted a bonfire for his family, say, a family reunion, something of that nature, that exceeded some of these amounts, say, thirty-one personnel, that would essentially double plus some on our fees that we charge for the company. And, like I said, the people would not want to use our services any longer for that, and that would actually harm us more. I do agree that we should pay the fees on certain amounts, say, the seven fifty going up. Utilizing the public accesses is a privilege, and we respect that as a vendor. We appreciate that the county lets us do that. A lot of our neighboring counties do not allow any type of bonfire thing on the beach. We will remain responsible, I know we've spoken about an association being started. Peer responsibility, the code enforcement comes to TDC. I think our regulations and everything that you have provided will maintain that responsibility, but I believe some of these fees can be changed. I understand us paying them, glad to, but five hundred dollars for thirty-one people is a little high. I was wondering if we could maybe cut that in half to two fifty, shift some of these numbers down a little bit for our, some of the smaller vendors.
Brian, what triggers a special event?
Couple of things trigger a special event. First thing is if you want to do something that's not normally allowed by code. We recently, or earlier in the evening, you passed a threshold on number of people. And then, those are the, those are the two main things that trigger.
Okay, what a bonfire trigger a special event?
Bonfire does not trigger a special event. Wedding is the third item that triggers a special event, and that is to keep from having more than one wedding at any given beach access. I'd like to ask, what is the typical cost for a bonfire for thirty people?
For thirty people on our, our website, it's right at three seventy-five. But with the thirty people that here, that, just to clarify it, if my bonfire exceeded that thirty personnel, say, it was thirty-one, would that require the special event based on the personnel that are coming to the fire?
Because of the recent change of a trigger for special events going from fifty to thirty, then, yes, sir, it would.
Okay, and that would essentially, like I said, double the price of the fire that I offer.
Right.
That was my main concern, and I've shared a lot of the other vendors' concerns as well.
So, how much would a bonfire be for fifty people? I'm just trying to get an idea because it's just not something I normally do.
Okay, for fifty people?
What would you charge?
Be right, about seven hundred and fifty dollars for fifty people. So, that would up the price to twelve fifty.
I hate to keep harping on this, but I say over and over, this is a privilege to use public beaches.
But you can't outright, you can't price them to the point that they won't come.
But seven hundred and fifty dollars?
I've got a small business, too, and.
Right, and, and I agree, and to go from fifty to a thousand, fifty to two hundred and fifty, fifty to a hundred and fifty, I will pass and make a alternate, alternate motion that we use Sherri's figures. Fifty dollars for less than ten, a hundred and fifty from ten to thirty, two hundred and fifty from thirty-one to fifty, fifty-one to seventy-five was five hundred, and then, over seventy-five's a thousand. That was, that would be my motion.
Are, are we gonna have code enforcement out there counting? I mean, because this is, we're starting to talk about a lot of money for small businesses.
Commissioner, Commissioner, wait a minute, we got a, we got a motion on the floor, we need a second before we can discuss it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, discussion, Commissioner.
I don't think we're gonna have code enforcement out there counting. But if we can look at these numbers, maybe, and think ten dollars a head to cover the permitting and the code enforcement, and that would be something, as a small business owner, I could, I could add, considering the, the privilege. I own my own property for my business, but a hundred dollars for less than, this, a hundred dollars for less than ten, a ten to thirty, two hundred, thirty-one to fifty, three hundred, and then, over fifty, five hundred. And that's about a ten-dollar scale. I don't even, I didn't even write down what you, ma'am, what you said. That's on the average of about ten dollars per.
Okay, wait a minute, before you go into that, we got a motion and a second on the floor, we need to address that first, and then you can come with yours.
Well, doesn't, in that part of it, if we're gonna change the, what did?
We have one fifty, two fifty, five hundred, and over seventy-five, a thousand. That was a motion.
I gotta write that, give me a minute. Okay, Commissioner Jones, give me your figures again. Okay, less than ten was fifty. Uh-huh. Ten to thirty was a hundred and fifty, thirty-one to fifty was two hundred and fifty, thirty, uh.
Fifty-one to seventy?
Fifty-one to seventy, I can't read my writing, fifty-one to seventy-five is five hundred, and then, over that, or over seventy-five is a thousand. Okay. And does that average out to about ten dollars a head?
Pretty close.
Somebody do the math?
We, discussion with the board first, then we'll get you. Any other discussion from the board?
It's a happy medium, and if, you know, we start with this, and then if we see that. So, instead of four weddings, we'll have five weddings?
Okay, public comment. Sherri, did you want to say something?
Well, I was just gonna say, yes, I was gonna answer your question, yes, that does, you know, where those, those.
But don't we have to, point of order, don't we have to have a motion to set aside our other motion? Don't look at him!
I would, I would suspect, if the motion passed, and you pass a subsequent motion that supersedes that motion, the latest motion would prevail.
And just, just for the sake of clarity, I make a motion that we, we negate our last motion and, and change to, for these figures to go in that I've already announced twice.
You amend your second.
No, he seconded, I did.
I'm, I'm in my second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'll say no, because I'm standing on principle.
Okay, four to one, passed.
Okay, that, that concludes our meeting, please be careful going home.